Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting. The South East Local Area Committee online consultation event. My name is councillor Tony Downing, I'm the Chair of the Local Area Committee. Of this Local Area Committee, I would like to welcome you to this online consultation event. This evening's event is being held. This is, sorry about that, this evening's event is being held to report back details of the public consultation on the local area community plan. In the South East Lake and to give you, the public, an opportunity to consider those initial findings, test their validity and identify any gaps. The event is being held online because of the current ongoing situation with Covid and the need to protect the public, members and staff. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention for this online event. And I will hand over to my colleague from Democratic Services to set out the details, please, housekeeping.
Thank you, Chair. So this event is being conducted using Zoom as a virtual platform and will be live streamed for the public to view in the council's public iWebcasting site. This will mean that the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. You should be aware that the authority is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during the webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's data retention policy. Therefore, by entering the virtual meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. If members of the public do not wish to have their image captured, they should turn their camera off. Alternatively, you can leave the virtual meeting room and watch a live webcast from the council meetings' webpages. We have a high number of attendees, so to help make the meeting run as smoothly as possible, it is important that all participants in the virtual meeting room have their microphone on mute for the duration of the meeting. At the appropriate part of the meeting, you will be able to indicate your wish to speak by using the raise a hand function. The Chair will let you know when this is. Please only unmute when the Chair invites you to speak. This will help reduce the scope for noise interference. To assist with the smooth flow of the meeting, the chat facility is not available. May I also suggest that all mobile phones and similar devices are switched to silent in order to remove the potential for disturbance when speaking at the meeting. Also, please ensure that you have an appropriate background. Thank you in advance for your cooperation with this. One final thing to mention, a live transcript of the meeting is available by clicking on the live captioning button on your toolbar.
Thank you for that, Fiona. We have a running order of the meeting, but before we proceed with this, I would like to explain how the meeting will work. I will shortly ask the councillors for the local area, the South East Local Area Committee, the officers to introduce themselves. We will then have a presentation from the area manager to report back on the initial findings from the public consultation on the Lake Community Plan. After this, we will break into groups to discuss the different themes that have arisen. I will explain how these breakout groups will work when we get to that point. After the breakout room discussion, we will receive an overview of the main discussion points from each group. We will collate all the details after the meeting to inform the final version of the plan. There will then be opportunity for public questions. I will explain how this works when we get to the, when we get to this item. Finally, I will sum up and outline the next steps. Item two is, can I now ask the councillors and officers, please, to introduce themselves? I can't see them because you've put the thing up. I will call out their names and ask them to unmute and introduce themselves. Thank you. Jane.
Good evening, my name's Jane Folds and I'm the South East Lake Community Services Manager.
Nick.
Good evening, I'm Nick Hamilton, I'm Head of Communities responsible for the South, South East and South West Lakes.
Ed. Hello, I'm Ed Montagie and I'm the Project Support Officer for the South East Clericity.
Bob.
I'm councillor Bob McCann, the Baiton Ward councillor.
Frances.
Frances West, I'm here as Project Support to describe one of the breakout rooms.
Karen.
Councillor Karen McGowan for Burley Ward.
Chris.
Chris Rosling-Josephs, Baiton councillor.
Jackie. You're on mute, Jackie.
Councillor Jackie Satter, Lowclery, Deputy Chair.
Andrew Rudd.
Hi, Andrew Rudd, I'm here as Project Support to describe one of the workshops.
Anne.
Anne Woolhouse, councillor for Baiton.
Gail. You're on mute, Gail.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone, I'm councillor Gail Smith and I'm a Mosborough Ward councillor.
Scott.
Good evening, everybody, my name's Scott Ford, I'm the Community Services Officer for the South East Lake.
Mick Rooney.
I might be Mick Rooney, I reckon, okay, so I'm a councillor for Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mick. Kevin.
The only one, Mick. Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming, my name's Kevin Oxley and I'm councillor for Mosborough.
Thank you, and just for clarity, I know I've introduced myself as the Chair, but I'm also a councillor in Mosborough Ward. Right, we now move to item three, report back on the consultation on the community plan. I will hand over to the area manager to give the presentation. Jane.
Chair, can I just mention that two other councillors are joining us later, they're in other meetings. So councillor Denise Fox and councillor Brian Lodge for Burley Ward.
Thank you, thank you, Karen. Apologies for this, we're just, the technical, the technical stuff with it being a virtual meeting, we'll be with you in just a few moments, thank you. Is everyone on mute? I can hear some background noise.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Thumbs up, yeah. Technical hitches, thank goodness for youngsters. Good evening, everybody, so what I want to do now is share with you the feedback from the recent consultation that's taken place and the issues and priorities that have come out of that consultation that will hopefully help form and inform priorities for the community plan. Okay. So just to recap, for any of the aren't sure what Lowclery Committees are, the primary purpose of the Lowclery Committee or LACs as they're quite often referred to is to enable and promote the involvement of local people in the democratic process and then to ensure that we bring decision-making closer to local people. LACs are a chance for people to influence decision-making, share their opinions and contribute to positive changes in their community. They're an opportunity for people to say what they would like to see improved in their area. LACs do have some devolved powers and further details of their roles and responsibilities can be found on the Sheffield City Council website. And this presentation will go on to the council website after we've finished the meeting. So who are your Lowclery Committee? We've just done a round of introductions, but this slide just goes on to show the Chair of our South East Lowclery Committee is councillor Tony Downing and the Vice Chair is councillor Jackie Satter. The rest of the Committee are made up of the remaining 10 councillors within the South East area. And for the Baiton Ward, they are councillors Bob McCann, Chris Rosling-Josephs and Anne Woolhouse. For the Burley Ward, councillors Denise Fox, Brian Lodge and Karen McGowan. For the Mosborough Ward, we have councillors Tony Downing, Kevin Oxley and Gail Smith. And for the Woodhouse Ward, we have councillors Mick Rooney, Jackie Satter and Paul Wood. The Lowclery Committee is supported by officers who've just introduced themselves and as you can see, we've got lovely photographs there. So that's myself, Nick, Scott, Ned. On the page, it also shows you links to our Facebook page, our Twitter page. You can email us and we've also got a telephone number if you want to call us. So about the South East, as we've mentioned, the South East is made up of four wards, the Baiton, Burley, Mosborough and Woodhouse wards as they're referred to. And the area has a population of 69,558. And it's made up of historic farming and mining villages and it's woven together with more modern suburban townships. So what do we know about the South East? I've mentioned what the population is and that's broken down. Just over 17% of the population are between the age group of 0 to 15. There's just over 62% of a working age group and just an over 65 is round about 21%. Predominantly, the ethnicity is 94% white British. And then we have just over 3% of black, Asian and ethnic minority, just over 1% of white non-British and of that 4.7% of multi-ethnic households. Within the South East, we have almost an even split, 51.9% females and 48.1% males. There's around 16,700 people that are classed as living in deprivation. And we have just over 28.8% of people that have no qualifications. That is higher than the national average, which is 22% across England. Within the South East, we also have 21.3% who have a limiting long-term illness. The main industry sectors within the South East are manufacturing, retail and health. And the average household income is just over 38,000. The tenure within the South East are just over 68% of the population are homeowners. And then the remaining population are made up from just over 18% of people that rent from the council, 4.5% from housing associations and 6.6% of private rent. This next slide is titled What's Said About Your Community? For any of you that have heard of Wordle documents or Wordle facilities, what this shows is, is the larger that the word is printed, is the more times that that was mentioned in the consultation that's taking place. So what this is saying to us for the South East is that when people were filling in the consultation documents, that the words that came out most frequently were people like the community, public transport, shopping, neighbours, open spaces and green spaces, they were very important to people within the South East. So that just gives you a flavour of the words that were coming out from the consultation that took place. So we talk about consultations, so what did we actually do to undertake consultation? So we did a series of events. Our first event, for those of you that attended, was our public meeting back in September 2021 and that was at the Fire Training Centre. And at the end of the event, at the back of the hall, you may remember if you attended, we had four ward maps, individual ward maps. And people were invited to leave comments around what they liked about the area and what they didn't. And they were put on post-it notes on the maps. At the end of September, the beginning of October, we also went live across the city with consultation via the council citizen space system. Running alongside that, we worked with voluntary community and faith groups within the area who undertook further consultation for us. And that was more prescribed face-to-face consultation, perhaps in focus groups or smaller groups. As officers and members, we also took in-person events within the community where we delivered face-to-face consultation. For those of you that were at Crystal Peaks, you may have seen the four of us stood at the top of the escalators asking people questions. And staff and members also attended various other events throughout the South East and spoke with individuals about their likes and dislikes. The individuals that took part in the consultation were asked to state three things that they liked about their area and three things that they would like to improve about their area. These are just some pictures of the consultation events that have taken place. The first one was of the meeting that took place, as I mentioned, in September, the first public meeting. And then that's just some further pictures of the other consultation. Okay, so what did the consultation actually tell us, what were people telling us? So we had 773 responses within the South East area. Of those, 427 responses were from the online survey and 346 were from the paper surveys. And then that's broken down into the ward detail and we had 37 and 33% responses from the Baiton and Mosborough wards, but lower responses from the Burley and the Woodhouse wards. What people told us, so these were the key things, these weren't the only things, but these were the key things that people told us. So what they liked about the South East was they liked the good friendly neighbours and the great community spirit. And there were lots of comments that said that that really became apparent during the pandemic. They liked the fact that there was excellent community facilities and there were excellent community groups. There were some concerns that some of those had actually sort of petered out through the pandemic but seemed to be restarting. People liked the fact that there was good shopping facilities locally. They liked the fact that there was plenty of green and open spaces. And they also liked the fact that there was the opportunity for good active travel and good public transport. What they told us that they would like to improve was, there was lots and lots of comments about traffic calming methods, particularly to try and tackle speeding vehicles throughout the area. There were issues with parking throughout the area and people wanted to see that those were resolved. There was lots of concerns and comments about better street cleaning and street maintenance. And in particular, that footpaths and streetlights were improved. There were requests for more frequent and improved police presence. And then there was also lots of comments about wanting to see reductions in antisocial behaviour and crime. So the people who completed the survey, the age categories with the highest response rates were from the 55 to 64 for the online survey and 50 plus for the paper surveys. A little bit of concern for us is the fact that we had a really low response rate for the under 24 age group. We had 55% of the surveys completed online and 64% of the respondents were female and 32% were male. 10% of the people that responded lived in social housing. So the community priorities and the action plan, so what did that lead on to tell us? The three key themes that came out of the consultation was around transport and highways, specifically the comments around speeding cars and traffic calming measures, environment, specifically around street cleaning and maintenance and concerns raised around leaves and litter that's constantly seen around the area. Thank you, sorry, either somebody's muted me or I've muted myself, so I'm not sure where I was. But the second theme was around environment. As you can see there, the comments around street cleaning and maintenance concerns, specifically around leaves litter. And then the third theme was around community safety and crime. And that was specifically targeted around an increased police presence, antisocial behaviour, the fear of crime and antisocial behaviour, gangs of youth, off-road biking and drug-related issues. Okay, so when we looked at transport and highways, we looked at, we broke that down even further. What this, what this slide actually shows us is that of the respondents, as you can see, traffic calming was way in front of all the other comments, followed by parking and then public transport and safer routes and roads. So when we looked at those comments and we looked at potentially what we might be able to do to perhaps try and resolve some of those issues, what this table shows us is the priorities that are highlighted on the left, some of the current ideas that we have come up with as the Lowclery Committee have come up with. And then the end column, as you can see there, it's any new ideas to be discussed at in the public workshops. So some of the things that we thought about that may be able to help tackle and resolve some of the issues was potentially explore restrictions to perhaps reduce inappropriate parking, explore resident parking schemes, encourage enforcement activity to prevent inappropriate parking and also to undertake a speeding review across the South East area to take a look at what reasonable actions we could possibly deliver to mitigate speeding vehicles. With this transport links, what we looked at was the potential to identify any links with external partners to look at improving transport links in the South East area. This wasn't for the whole of the South East, the transport links, it was specific in certain areas, but it was in each of the wards. Also to perhaps take a look at safer cycling routes and safer parking for cycles and also identify and remove the barriers in order to improve active travel. So those were just some of the thoughts and current ideas that we'd got around perhaps starting to alleviate some of the concerns and issues that were raised. For the environment, as I mentioned earlier, the key thing that came out was around street cleaning and maintenance, followed by environmental maintenance and cleaning. That was followed by footpaths and streetlights, comments around footpaths and streetlights, then followed by dog fowling, bins. Then we've got other and climate cleaner and carbon footprint comments. So some of the thoughts and ideas that we've got around that. Around the street and environmental cleaning and maintenance, we know within the South East that we have a lot of voluntary litter picking groups that undertake an enormous amount of work. So that's whether we can support those voluntary groups further or whether we can encourage new voluntary groups to perhaps start, start up to raise awareness of reporting mechanisms for street and highways issues and perhaps smooth those links. Perhaps take a look at the Love Where You Live campaign and have a look at how we might be able to perhaps educate and work within certain areas to alleviate some of those problems. Also linked in with that was around waste, rubbish and bins. We could potentially explore options to increase recycling, again, that could link with the Love Where You Live campaign about educating people how to recycle, where to recycle and what to recycle. It's quite confusing within Sheffield, we have a certain number of bins. And particularly if we're looking at the areas that where it's communal facilities, sometimes it's quite difficult for people to perhaps ensure that that happens correctly. And also a lot of comments were around providing more bins and perhaps notices, particularly in parks. Dog fowling was a real comment that came up quite frequently. And then one of the other things that people wanted to look at to support health and wellbeing was perhaps help support Friends of Parks groups. And that's to make sure that the parks could perhaps look at renewal or updating of the plan for fitness activities for all age groups across the area. Within the community safety and crime theme, theme three, the one of the comments that came out most was around police presence and patrol. And then that was closely followed around ASB and crime. And when we looked at those comments further, a lot of that was around the perceived fear of crime and the fact that people were making comments around large groups of youth hanging about within areas. And obviously what people were saying to us is that made them feel quite unsafe, not wanting to go out. There was other then comments around off-road bikes, youth nuisance and around safety and security and drug and alcohol abuse. Some of the thoughts that we had around those would be to perhaps tackle the issue of off-road biking. We know that the police are currently undertaking an awful lot of work to alleviate those issues. So that's perhaps to work further with the police and other partners to identify any further hotspot areas and promote the good work that's already been undertaken. When we're looking at issues of youths hanging around street corners, some of the comments that were fed back to us were particularly, not that the youths were doing anything untoward, but just the fact that there was a group of them there. So some of the thoughts we'd had there was perhaps work with all the services that are open to us, particularly around youth services, to perhaps help identify provision or at least engage with the youths about what may help them or what they would want to do that may move them away from hanging on street corners. You'll notice when we were going through who responded earlier, the response rate for youngsters within the area was extremely low. So it may be that as a community that you know, want us to look at doing further work around engaging with the youths within the South East area. And then when we're looking at tackling issues of perceived fear and crime, a lot of the comments that came back was that people felt quite isolated. And that once it's seen those perceived, so once it's seen the groups of youths hanging about, that that tends to make it worse. It's seemed to have got worse since the pandemic has been upon us. And that some of the community groups that they perhaps involved with previously no longer existed or were starting to come back out and regroup again. So it's whether we could perhaps look at ways of helping develop and putting people in touch with those community groups. So those were just some of the, so those were the three key themes that came out of the consultation. And those were just some of the thoughts and ideas that had been talked about and discussed and had come through from the Lowclery community. And then what will happen now is I'll hand you back to the Chair who will talk to you about how we go through the next 45 minutes and the next sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jane. So as you can see, everybody, there's a lot of work gone into all this, a lot of work and consultation with people, talking to people and getting their views. And so if you have any questions on, any of the questions on the presentation, could you please ask them in the relevant breakout sessions or in the question and answer session at the end of the meeting, towards the end of the meeting at item six. We now move into, onto item four, the breakout discussion. We will now move into breakout room discussions. Everyone has been pre-allocated to a breakout room based on the preference they indicated when they registered. There will be somebody designated as a facilitator in each room who will help lead and manage discussions and a note taker. The main purpose of these sessions is to allow us to consult with you as members of the public to relay some of our initial findings and test their validity and identify any gaps. We are, we are very keen to hear from as many people as possible within the group. And we're politely asked that people try not to dominate the discussion, preventing others from contributing. Things would, things we would like you to consider. The presentation highlighted the main issues that have been identified through consultation. Are these correct? We would like to agree priorities based on discussions, our discussions. And what would you like to see outcomes suggest in terms of addressing these issues? How would you or partners like to be involved in the solution? How would you or partners like to be involved in the solution? These sessions will run for 45 minutes. Please do not leave the breakout room until the host brings you back into the main meeting. I will now ask the host to set up the rooms. This may take a few minutes, so please can he ask for your patience to give us a little time to make these arrangements. Thank you.
I'm not sure if anybody else is going to join us. It should be the councillor on Karen McGowan. Somebody got a telephone ringing. Can people put the cameras on please? Just give it another couple of minutes if anybody else is joining us.
Hi, there's a few people that are left behind if you can, if you can hear this. I've got a list of names here. So Chris Berry, which, which room would you like to go to?
Hi, yeah, I'm, I'm working at the council, so I'm just doing a report at the moment. I don't need to join a breakout session.
You don't wish to, because did I get that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Thanks.
Okay, Claire Baker.
Can I go in environmental, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Gary Monahan. You're on the, Gary.
Hi, yeah, yeah, can I go on environmental too?
Of course. Yep, Phil Jackson.
Yeah, I'd like to go on environmental as well, please, as it's what I'm most concerned with.
Hi, Jackie.
Yeah.
Yeah, which, which room would you like to sign to?
Talking to Jackie Satter, aren't you?
That's correct, yes. Hi, Jackie Satter.
I'm chairing the transport one.
Okay, I did put you in there, so I think it asks if you want to go. If you just press yes when it comes up. Stay with me a moment, please. Councillor Teter, have you still got the, the request to join the room?
I haven't. So I've pressed that breakout rooms.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And is it asking if you want to go? No, she's gone. Fantastic. Okay, so Helen, hi Helen.
Hi, I'm from Amy and I attended the North meeting last night and it's more appropriate for environment for us, please, rather than transport.
Okay, is everyone back in? Just before we go any further, I would just like to say, if some of you haven't had the time to get your questions in, in the breakout sessions, if you would like to email them in to the address, the lack address, you will get a written response to all the questions. But there is a chance for questions at item six, depending on how much time is left to do that. However, now what I'd like to do now is ask the facilitator who describes to give a concise feedback of no more than five minutes, please, each one. And can I ask the the environment group, please, if they want to do their feedback? Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, I just couldn't find the unmute button. I don't know, obviously, we ran the group, myself, councillor Gail Smith and councillor Anne Woolhouse. I don't know whether either of the councillors wanted to feedback. I'm happy to feedback. Shall I just carry on? Okay, right.
Yeah, carry on.
Right, great. Really interesting.
Carry on.
Thank you. Really interesting discussion. We didn't actually get through everything that we wanted to because there was some really, you know, good stuff that was talked about. We talked about, and we actually got some solutions in the session as well because we had some colleagues from Amy, which was really helpful. We talked about issues around litter picking and some of the issues around could we possibly get some ANPR type cameras to actually monitor, you know, fly tipping activity and things being thrown out of cars on some of the main roads and whether or not that could actually, you know, cover its own costs, you know, by the fines that were actually generated from identifying that activity. We talked about reduction in carbon footprint and, you know, real desire to see things like rewilding, for instance, in certain areas of the South East. We talked, where are we, about having dedicated points of contact within the Parks and Countryside Service in order to see things through because there's a bit frustration in terms of you don't necessarily get through to the right person or you've got suggestions and it just takes forever to get some responses. We, what else? I'm trying to read my writing here. There was a desire to see more joined up thinking in terms of bringing, you know, council departments together and having a sense in terms of things were treated, you know, on a fair basis across the patch and things happening in one area and not in another. Real desire to see the local area committee working and having some teeth behind it and actually coming up with some solutions and not just being seen as a talking shop. And I think that's probably as much as I can get in the time I've got allocated unless anybody else wants to add anything to what I've said there.
Anyone else in the group want to add to that? No? Okay, okay.
I think that was a fair summary. As Nick said, there was quite a lot of discussion and so it was a bit difficult to keep it all in hand.
Thank you. So now can we have the report back on the transport breakout room, please?
Yeah, I'm doing that, Tony.
Oh, Karen.
Yeah, we had a good discussion as well. And basically, the things that we wanted to add to the the actions we'd already got was around education and about walking buses. And they seem to have died a bit away from schools with COVID, etc. So can we have a bit of, you know, a push with schools? Some will be doing them, but can we have another push on that? And around education of young people from a young age as well about, you know, parking outside school. It's nothing more powerful than a child saying to her mum after an education session in school, you shouldn't be parking there, mum or dad or whatever. So something around that. We had a conversation around electric charging points and we need to, although we know that would be a citywide thing and we haven't got a lot of money for things like that, it's about having an awareness and that that's something we've got to be looking towards on the horizon. Can we have more enforcement and can, is there something we can do around enforcement of parking? Big thing for me was grass verge parking and talked about options for residents and whether resident, you know, if we could find some options and ask the residents, because we haven't got the money, if they would be willing to pay. And then there was a suggestion about, you know, could some of our community groups, because they can apply for funding parts of money that we can't as a council. The only thing with that is would the funders want to fund people's private grass verges for, but anyway, it was an option about whether community groups could apply for that. A really good thing that came out was about shock tactics. So it was about a dummy body outside of school kind of shock tactic about something being knocked down. And they were saying that was, that might work. And sometimes you have to go to the next streams, which then led on to about accidents at Mossborough, outside Mossborough Hotel. And, you know, whether to leave a car that had been in an accident there on site to remind everybody about what happens, that kind of thing, instead of getting things removed straight away and then people getting on and speeding starting again. There's a big thing about people have to take responsibility for the speeding, you know, it's, it's one of them things that we all have to, you know, abide by the law and everything as well. So I don't know if there's anything, Scott or Jackie, if you want to come in if I've missed anything.
Just to come in and say that we sort of talked about thinking outside the box, really, if something isn't happening, if, for example, we put a vase up in an area and we're still getting incidents of speeding and crashes, maybe we need to be a bit more creative and look for other solutions than what we've looked at before to see as a way around a problem, really. So, and I think that came up quite a few times.
Can I just mention about shock tactics? I wouldn't like to think that there was an actual car and a body, pretend body in there. But, you know, one of the people named Ron, I've got a photograph of one of the incidents, that could be made into a poster, you know, and that would be a lot easier to put a poster up, a big one, you know, so people do get shocked when they see this and it's happening in that region visiting. I don't think I'd like to leave the car there because it would just be vandalized and messed about with. Thank you. We did have a good discussion on our session. It was really good.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we've got the crime and community safety. Jen?
Thank you, Chair. Again, we had a really, really good discussion in our group. And we started talking about the fact that a lot of the youth that are hanging about aren't particularly doing anything wrong. It's just the fact that they stood there, and particularly because there's not anything that interests them or anything to do. And there was a discussion around some of the success that's happened for some of the areas where issues have been caused. That was around the parent advisory letters in the Hackenthorpe area. It then led on to a discussion around underreporting. So if there are issues with crime and antisocial behaviour, what a lot of people were saying is that it's actually quite difficult or people can't be bothered to report using the 101 number. So that led on to a discussion around actually using the 101 portal, which then led to a further discussion because some of the members are saying, well, actually, we're not really sure how you, how you would access that, how would you do that? How can we make people aware? So one of the things that came out of the group was that the lack would work with the local police and would put something together, some sort of poster that we could share with the community groups and put out there, that be able to be able to access that. We started talking as well about the different ways of consulting and engaging with the youth throughout the area. Because obviously, what we do know is that the local, the local or the usual ways of engaging don't seem to be working. It certainly didn't work for our last round of consultation. So there were suggestions around using obviously the football clubs and the bikes and getting people while they're actually involved in something that they like doing. There was some feedback from somewhere that had gone off in the Westfield area where they'd employed an artist who'd worked with local kids and had got them engaged and got suggestions for what they actually liked to see by getting involved in art and in a way that actually they didn't really know what was happening. There were some suggestions that perhaps we needed to think outside of the box and be an imagine, and be imaginative as to how we do that. There were some suggestions around perhaps using the arenas that the youngsters use, suggestions around TikTok, and that's really popular. So if any TikTok experts out there, we're really happy to try that. Scott, you were suggested as the TikTok queen or king, am I right? So one of the other things that was suggested as well is that more joint workmanship and partnership working within the local community and the local police. Certainly since the pandemic had started, and sort of like a lot of the community forums and a lot of community events had stopped. And what the feedback was, came through was that at those events, sort of off the cuff conversations took place. So people would drop into those events, police would drop in and have either a coffee and a conversation. And that's where a lot of, I suppose, the off the cuff comments and conversations took place. So there was a commitment from, from the, from the police that they'd like to sort of get back into that and engage with that. And they'd probably be more effective than the pop up police surgeries that are taking place throughout the area. And there was also talk about what needed to be done about the issue around drugs and that actually it's perhaps the fact that we need to get more into and more serious about the use of drugs. There were some comments made that actually it seems to be common practice now. If you're walking down the road, it's acceptable if people are stood there smoking a joint, that, you know, it's just part of the norm now and run of the mill. And the police did mention that they're working on a drug plan for the, for the air. And it's one of the priorities for the area. And that obviously we need to take a look at that. It probably wasn't, it was also mentioned that within our group as well, that speeding vehicles, so although it wasn't part of the group that we're looking at highways and traffic, that actually speeding vehicles in area gives that fear of crime as well, because it is a crime if you're speeding. And if vehicles are speeding up and down the roads, it's making people fearful for actually crossing the roads, deciding when they want to go out, etc. I think I've covered that unless there's anything else that anybody wants to comment on that I've missed.
Pretty comprehensive. I think you've covered most of the points there that we discussed. Yeah, that, that thing. Right, we've got, we've just got roughly 30 minutes now left of this meeting. And I want to bring some questioners in. I've got about four written questions, five written questions. Dawn, is Dawn Spear here? I think I've seen her name somewhere. Are you there, Dawn? Yeah, yeah. Is that for, Phil, is that for Dawn? Or is, oh, Dawn's here. I'll come to you in a bit, Phil.
All right.
Okay, Dawn?
Hi, yeah. Sorry, so I submitted a few questions actually. And so I'll just work my way through them if that's okay. So I've got them written down here. So the first one is about nature emergency. So in May 2021, over 1000 local people and organisations declared a nature emergency in Sheffield, of which then Sheffield City Council followed suit and they actually declared a nature emergency. And we were told that Sheffield Council would be looking to commit to a nature emergency plan. And in August 2021, after declaring a nature emergency, we were told by councillors Terry Fox and Douglas Johnson, that we would be sharing a nature emergency plan with the group in early 2022, which is now. So I'm just asking the first question. The first question would be, when will we be able to get a response to that? Obviously, given the fact that we're into January now, we've only got another couple of months. So that's the first.
Can I answer that one for you? Because I've got a written, I've just got a written answer here, Dawn. And it says, many thanks for the question. This is from, obviously, from Terry Fox and Douglas Johnson. Many thanks for the questions. We're still in process of working on the NEAP. This is happening in parallel with a range of duties and responsibilities that sit at a Sheffield and South Yorkshire level in relation to the Environment Bill, which becomes an act in November 2021. We are keen that the NEAP, that's the nature, what do they call it, the Nature Emergency Action Plan captures and builds on the great work that is already happening across Sheffield by a range of partners and hope to provide an update shortly on how communities contribute. So that's the latest I've got on that. Okay.
So we still don't really have a date.
Not yet, no. So we need to keep pressing for a date. And I will try and contact councillor Fox on this one. All right, for you. So, okay, what's your second question, please?
So you're going to get back, can you give us an idea of when you'll get back?
Well, I should, I shall, I shall get back to Terry Fox. I shall, I shall write to Terry tomorrow, tomorrow. Okay.
Okay. So when do we think we'll hear a response from you then, Tony?
Soon as I get a response, I will, I will make it known. All right.
Brilliant. Thank you.
Okay, Dawn, do you want to ask your second question?
Yeah. So the second question is about our thought fields, which a lot of people are aware of around this because obviously it's very local to us. So 2021 saw the devastation of Site E. We're still looking to try and preserve Sites C and D. And we were aware that there's a local plan that we're looking for Sheffield City Council to get on board with to try and ensure then that we've got enough areas to build houses for. We know that's, that's a government target. We know that's, that's a government target. But I think we've been, we've been told that we can't actually guarantee the safety of the sites. But they definitely won't be sold before 2023, which isn't, it's not good news, the fact that it's still on the agenda to sell them. And so when will Sheffield City Council be able to reveal the local plan? And so that we can have, you know, get some idea of whether the fields are still up for sale. Or whether they can actually be taken off and brown fields be used for building instead.
Right, well, I've got a brief answer here from, from the planning department. And also, I think after I've done that, I think councillor McCann wants to, wants to comment on it as well. And what it says here is they have emailed Michael Johnson, head of planning, and Maria Johnson to ask a timescale for the local plan. Maria has asked Simon Vincent to respond. He leads on the local plan, but not sure whether it will get a response before tonight though. And then an update from Simon Vincent, which says. The timetable for the local plan is set out in the latest version of the Local Development Scheme. The official name for the local plan timetable. This was approved by the Cooperative Executive on the 20th of October 2021. And is available on the council's website. Full council is expected to approve the draft local plan in September this year with public consultation taking place. Now, that's a written answer that I've got by from, from planning, okay? Now, I think, I think Bob wants to comment as well. Councillor McCann.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just briefly, I mean, I'm aware that the Althorpe Fields Action Group is very active and very switched on. And they're making very constant communication with Avantam, with the Sheffield City Council. And all parts of the elbow are doing a great job with it. It's just unfortunate we've ended up in a situation like this. And as to the future of the other fields, I'm afraid we're going to have to wait to see what the local plan brings forward. And see what we can, we can add to that, but we can be sure that a lot of people are looking at this very, very closely. As yourselves and the Althorpe Hatching Group are. And actually, I don't think Avantam's have been particularly helpful in some of these situations. I know there've been issues with heavy vehicles to trundling around the estate and lots of cars parked, which would happen. But we did ask for a traffic management plan on that, but I'm not quite sure exactly what it turned out to be. Because nobody seems to know what it is, I don't think. But as I said, we can only keep a close eye on things going forward and keep watch this space basically when we go. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of questions here, but the question is not here tonight. So what I propose to do is get a written answer to Helen, Helen Fitzpatrick. I don't think she's here, is she? No, I don't think so. Right. Speeding traffic, this is, I don't think I've got, I don't think I've got a name on this one. It's during the last, during the last meeting, there was understanding a lot of focus on speeding traffic. Soon after the meeting, I sent an email to the LAC email address stating, I suspect speeding is a citywide issue and has. Or will be raised at other LAC meetings. I believe it was councillor Rooney who raised a point that speed indicator devices, or SIDS. Were to be put in place in the near future as a traffic calming measure. I'm sure there are speeding traffic hotspots that are already on SCC's radar. In order to capture, evaluate and target those areas in most need of action. Would it be possible to involve local residents and ask for their input? Information could be gathered in much the same way as done in the Active Travel Map, where residents were invited to make comment on the map. Perhaps a traffic calming options could be added. A mixture of lower cost peripheral hatching and speed limit roundels. Which from research done by Somerset County Council, appear to have done, so had some impact. Along with more costly SIDs and speed dumps for residents to suggest which option they feel would be most suitable. And then it was on to say councillor Rooney mentioned, but applies to all wards, SIDS, VAS. Consultation has been carried out with councillors following feedback from constituents. I have been out highlighting specific lampposts this week and this needs to be in by Friday. I think, I think on this one, I think. Scott may have some information about the SIDS or the, or the VASs that are proposed for all the lack area. For all the wards in the lack area. Would you like to comment on that, Scott, for me?
Yeah, no puns on it. Yeah, we're currently going at at the moment identifying in all four wards. Up to six locations where we could possibly fit a VAS, a SID or a VAS now within the wards. And the aim is that we, we circulate the VASs around the six locations in every ward. So we've certainly done a bit of work on that at the moment. So we're having a good look around with, with. Feedback from local members who, as Tony's just touched upon there, who's, who got information from the constituents. In regards to hotspot areas within the area. So that's an ongoing process at the moment. We, we sort of hoping that the Mosbury Speed Review feeds into that in some way, particularly in the Mosbury area. And we could highlight specific areas where, where we could possibly put these, these VASs. But it is an ongoing, but we are working on that one at the moment.
Can I just, we had just had one or two words. I mean, myself, councillor Jackie Satter and Paul Wood. Were asked to come up with a list and strangely the list was almost exactly the same. And that is a result of what people complain to us about. I'm not, I'm not, I don't drive. I've never driven it. So but one of the things I have noticed. With the highway code and highway regulations is how very unhelpful they are. In terms of trying to deal with speeding. Now, we have got a particular, or Baiton Road, where the speed limit is apparently 30 miles an hour. Nobody does 30 miles an hour on there, ever. It's up 40 plus. But we can't put anything up to deter, to remind people about. The speed limit on there because of the distance between the lampposts apparently. Which are at a certain distance and that distance indicates that it's a 30 mile an hour. I mean, I just wonder how many drivers that there are in front of me knew that. Because I, it's just, all I'm saying is, it's some of the legislation don't help very much.
Okay, thank you. Bob, did you, is this about this question, Bob?
No, I know the facts that Michael was on about there.
All right, okay.
Can I just say that I've travelled around Europe quite a lot and they don't rely on the distance between lampposts. They actually put signs up saying what the speed limit is. Much more helpful, Mick, I agree with you.
Thank you. The other question was about. Would it be possible to have a single point of contact in the Sheffield Parks and Recreation Department to identify spaces to roll out and support? Rewilding projects, mini allotments and raised beds or patches of waste ground that schools and community groups could help care. Nature and community gardens. We do have contact and it is Rowan Longhurst. If you want to write that down, whoever's, or we can let whoever it was that sent that question in. I don't know who it was. No name on it. Okay, so, so, so that's, that's the written questions that I've got for this evening. Phil, Phil Jackson.
Yeah, that's interesting that you've just said that because Rowan Longhurst, when we met her. Expressed an interest in charging a fee for social prescribing. Now, that to me is ridiculous, but my main point that I wanted to raise is on litter picking. Under the Environment Act, Sheffield City Council are responsible for clearing the litter picking. And what nobody seems to realise is that all council employees have the right to issue on the spot fines. Of a hundred pounds. Now, simple measures like that, with Sheffield City Council just dishing out a few fines. Might deter people from chucking stuff out of their windows and out of their cars and dropping litter here, there and everywhere.
I take, I take your point on that, Phil, entirely. I mean, I litter pick every Saturday. And I'm sure other people do on this, on this call as well. And it's soul destroying when you go out and litter pick and then the next, a couple of hours after, it's nearly as bad again. Or there is stuff being thrown about. Yes, it's certainly something that perhaps we could take. I don't know, we'd take that up with really? The police? Not, not really. Environmental Services? We'll take that up with Environmental Services.
It's written into the Sheffield bylaws.
We'll, we'll make a note of that, Phil, thank you. And we'll, we'll put it through to Environmental Services. Thank you. Jane Finney. Come in, Jane.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, Phil, good point. Well, it's just three quick things. Could I be added to the direct contacts for the Parks and Countryside, please?
Yep.
As a, you know, as a small group trying to get something going. I think it would be really useful.
Send me your email details, Jane, will you?
I will, I will, Tony, yeah. And, you know, I think it's such a shame that we don't have. Direct availability to call the police or, you know, just to contact somewhere. I know there used to be. But there isn't now. And, you know, it'd be so good to be able to do directly speak to them. About what's actually happening and get some action quicker possibly. Because having 101 and it's absolutely hopeless, bloody hopeless. First of all, you know, do you want Derbyshire? Do you want South Yorkshire? Do you want somewhere else? You know, the time you faffed about, these people are off.
Yeah.
Anyway, just, just, just me venting. Sorry about that.
Well, that, that's a good point because also this is a fly tipping as well. It's a problem. And that's what, I think that's what you're alluding to. And the fly tipping, what we do is, what we, what we can do is, or what we try to do is. Our people go out and, and, and pick it up. And if they do identify any addresses within that fly tipping, they go through it if they can identify they will. But unfortunately, unless we, we get a vehicle number or some kind of identification of who's done it. All we can do is pick it up and it's just a cost to the council. And unfortunately, it's one of the things we have to suck it up, I'm afraid. But if we can find, if we can find out who's doing it, you know, then obviously that's, that's something that we really should be.
It is, it is. You know, without a camera on it or something, it's almost impossible. And there's just one more thing. When Helen Taylor was speaking from Amy. And she said, somebody had to contact Gillian, their brother, to get to her. But I noticed she mentioned several things, but she didn't mention grass cutting. And that is one of my bugbears because, you know, the MP mentions it. And then Amy come along and they start the grass cutting. Well, March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October. I mean, it's just such a waste when areas could be left. Or to get the men there. So and then the pollution with the cars, it's just. So perhaps, I don't know, do I get Gillian's, their brother's name off of this?
I can, I can, I can get you Gillian's details, but the, the only thing is, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, Jane. The thing is, we as councillors, we, we're in a, between a rock and a hard place. Because if we, if we insist on leaving grass uncut, you'll get some residents what will say, why don't you get this grass cut?
I'm not talking about the whole of it, just parts of it.
Yeah.
Where people don't walk.
Yeah, well, I'll certainly send you, I'll certainly send you Gillian's email details, okay?
Yeah, I mean, we did a survey and we found exactly the opposite. People were quite happy.
Were they?
To prosper the environment by letting grass grow, planting trees and wildflowers.
I think Gillian wants to. I think Gillian wants to come in here on this one.
I'm still here listening.
One at a time, please.
I'll be quick. We do leave 20% of grass anyway, so we don't cut the full 100% of our network anymore. But please let me know where, specific way, you know, where you are leaving. And we also did, and I can't remember for life for me now what it was called. We did trial where we left areas additional to the 20%. Where we were to encourage the wildlife to grow. Oh, my battery's going. But please, if you let me know where, you know, specific areas, then I'll do my best to help, yeah.
Jane, it's Helen here, ready me also. If you, if you funnel your inquiries through, through Gillian. We'll make sure we answer the questions that you have. I can take it straight to the grounds maintenance teams, who are the teams that deal with the grass cutting throughout that season. Gillian's absolutely right. We do have areas which we have left uncut. We've, as councillor Tony Downey suggested, we then get criticised for leaving those areas. But they were done for a reason to see what the response was. You'll appreciate, I'm not a grounds maintenance specialist, but we can, you know, I can funnel those questions straight across to them and get you some answers direct. So by all means, push everything through Gillian and anything that you, you don't get sorted, then come, you know, come to myself. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Claire, Claire Baker.
Hi, Tony, thank you. I'm just going to reiterate really what Dawn and Bob said, and I'm sorry for sounding like a broken record. But, you know, as you know, we fought for Althorpe Fields and. I accept that the new local plan is coming, but you know, the existing local plan was 22 years out of date. And because of it, Althorpe Fields have got built on. And so really, when the councils declare a climate emergency and a nature emergency and we've got a nature bill. Why can't for once we be leading the way in the UK? And saving and creating these spaces for nature with a nature recovery Sheffield team. And actually doing something positive and actually for once Sheffield lead the way and rather than having a reputation for cutting. For cutting trees down. As I said, we've lost another thousand of them that's just been cut down on Althorpe Fields now. That's all I just wanted to say. And I'm like, they're a disgrace. We have battled, I'm sure, as, as all the councillors in my ward will know, they've been a disgrace.
Yeah, okay. Does any of the councillors want to, from Baiton, want to say anything on that?
No, but I would like to just ask something, Tony. I actually remember where the, where we did the, where we had grass verges, where we talked to people in Stradbroke. Saying that we're not going to cut your grass verges, we're going to let them grow wild. And, and I know a specific road, I won't mention it, but I had a patient on there and everybody was up in arms. You can't win with some people. But as Jane Finney has said, there's an area in Mosbury, I'd be interested to know what bit of Mosbury it is that she wants to be. Left to grow wild and then we can support her, Tony, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, I've already looked at that and I think that's what Gillian's going to look at, Gail, but thank you anyway. All right. Anne?
It was just, where is it? Where is that bit of land? That's all.
Oh, sorry, yes, it's on Duke Street, a crossroad from, oh, now then. It's, it's, it's hard to describe. It's across, it's across from those houses, those terraced houses. As you drive on Duke Street from Mosbury Village end, you know, from, if you come off. I know where you mean, Tony. Yeah, yes, near Streetfields there, yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Anne, sorry, Anne.
I just wanted to comment on the use of the 101 number, particularly as Jane mentioned it as well. I was talking to a resident today who was making a complaint about noise and such like. And, and I said about ringing 101 and she says she has rung it several times, but. She says usually you're hanging on for ages and ages and when you've got to get for work the next morning, because it's usually late at night. She says it's, it's not a good number to be ringing. So as Jane has mentioned that we ought to be using it more. As I say, I got that comment from two people today. So on the Southall area. So I just think we perhaps need to find out a bit more about what is wrong with the 101 number. As the other lady mentioned it as well.
Perhaps we ought to try and use the. Perhaps we ought to try and use the portal as well, Anne, rather than the number. Well, that will get disseminated anyway. Denise?
Thank you. I was just going to ask the officers if, if they know when we're going to get our community safety officers out and about. I know that we're recruiting and I'm wondering when we're going to get one allocated to our area.
I know they've been out in the Westfield area because I've seen them. So I don't know, has anyone got any information on that? Jane? The community wardens.
We can't hear you, Jane.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
She, she's got a mic on her head.
There's always one, there's always me. So sorry about that, yeah. Denise, though, they have recruited, they've completed almost their recruitment process. And they are, there'll be six that will work across the area, but not solely in the area. And they'll be deployed by the Community Safety Officer, which is Shannon. And there's a senior that also works in that team. And there's a process for being able to ask for that team to be working within the area.
I should contact Shannon. I should contact Shannon if I were you.
We can, we can, we'll send you the form out, Denise. We'll let you make you aware.
Okay. Glenn?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Glenn?
Yeah, hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Glen Hinchin, manager of Crystal Peak's housing office. I was just going to add to what Jane had said.
All right, thanks, Glenn. Yeah. Okay, I've still got Gillian's hand up as.
Yeah, yeah, we're only quicky, Tony. We're just about the 101 number, actually. And I went to a meeting with Clive Betts and somebody from South Yorkshire Police. And because where we're situated in south east of Sheffield, we're very unfortunate in that, excuse me, it triangulates and we're actually sort of like, because we're borderline north east Derbyshire, Chesterfield and Rotherham and Sheffield. This is why we have a problem here. I don't know whether, you know, something can be done to stop that.
Thank you, thank you. I've got no more questions. I've got no more questions. So thank you, everyone, for your contributions. And I would like to thank everybody for attending this online event. The next step is for us to collate together all the feedback that we have received with a view to putting together a final version of the community plan. It is then intended that the plan is presented for approval by members to a formal meeting of the LAC to be held in March. Obviously, this will need to be COVID compliant, but we hope by then that the situation has improved enough for us to have a full in-person meeting. And the date for the March meeting is the 8th of March 2022. So thank you, everyone, again for your attendance. And I was going to say have a safe journey home, but there's only yours here. Okay, thank you. Bye bye. Cheerio, bye.